The clock is never right. It's a couple of minutes after seven we'll open up. It's, I think, 7:02. Welcome all to the meeting. The Harwood Zoning Board of Appeals on this Wednesday, January 30th, 2019, here at the Griffin Meeting Room, Harwoodstown Hall. Tonight, we're going to have the public hearing on two cases at the appropriate time. We'll invite the public to speak, and I'll let you know when. One of our alternate members, Megat Raye, resigned. She took a new position with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I just want to state on the record, we do thank her for her service and appreciate that and understand her need to not have any potential conflicts. I'm going to ask the members of the board to introduce themselves, please.
James Hilliard.
Dean Hedderstedt.
Dave Ryer.
Al Donahue.
Mike Capoli.
And Shayla Delaney, Secretary.
Okay, I will ask our clerk to call the first case, please.
Case number 2018-40. Matthew S. Applebaum and Nicole Applebaum have applied for a special permit to construct an addition onto a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwood, Section 325, Table 2, Area Regulations Set forth in Mass. General Law's Chapter 48, Section 6. Property is located at 16 Pine Needle Lane, Map 4, Parcel T1-24, in the RH-1 zoning district. We have one letter from a Butters that will be incorporated into the record, and we have a notice from the Zoning Board of Appeal. Basically says, "The proposed addition meets all required septic system setbacks but must remain with a crawl space."
From the Health Department.
From the Department of Health to the Board of Appeals?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, from the Health Department, the Zoning Board of Appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Hilliard. Attorney Singer, if you could introduce yourself for the record and then present your case, please.
Are voting tonight?
We all are.
We all are, there's only five of us, yeah.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Andrew Singer, an attorney in Dennisport here on behalf of the applicants. With me are the applicants, Matthew and Nicole Applebaum in the second row, along with Adam Mooring, the project architect. This property, as was read, is on Pine Needle Lane. It's in the RH-1 zoning district. We have a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling with a patio and its attached garage. No work is being requested for the garage. That's going to remain as is. What they would like to do, as shown on the plans, is to remove the section, the small section at the right-hand side of the house, and they would like to build a addition to the house as part of this. Most of the addition is one-story with a cathedral ceiling. As you can see on the plans, they're also adding some dormers on the front of the house. They will also be relocating the bulkhead, and so on the south side of the house, you see a new proposed basement enclosure to get into the lower level. We are requesting under 324-54, special permit to alter this pre-existing, non-conforming dwelling. You have a copy of the building commissioner's referral letter in your file, and the standard you're looking at, as you know, is the proposal substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what is there. As I wrote in the summary of reasoning that I submitted to you, I would respectfully submit that the proposal will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Single-family residential use is allowed in this zone, and it will not change. The front setback of the addition will remain the same at its closest point to the pre-existing non-conforming front setback. There will be a covered entry gable that we showed on, which will bump out a little there, and there is a, because of the angle of the house, there's a small adjustment in the rear of the house by about two inches in one corner. So, we're not increasing the nonconformities further encroaching other than is allowed under the bylaw. Building coverage, we have a table on the plan, building coverage will remain conforming, site coverage will remain conforming, building height will remain conforming. We submit that the proposal will be in keeping with and compatible with the neighborhood. As Mr. Hilliard mentioned, there is a letter of support from one of the property of Butters for the proposal. Submit, there's going to be no change in dens, well, there will be no change in density, so we submit it's going to be no impact on traffic in the neighborhood, no negative impact on water supply or drainage, and there won't be any undue nuisance hazard or congestion. For all of these reasons, we'd respectfully request that you make finding that the proposal will not be substantially more detrimental and approve the special permit request for the applicant. If you have any questions of any of us, we'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
I have no questions.
Mr. Hilliard.
I'm sorry.
I don't have any questions. My review of this project says there's no increase, if you will, in the nonconformity, and therefore, the addition of what they're trying to do meets the proposition of the Gale case, and therefore, it falls under appropriately the request for special permit.
Yeah, I agree. I think it meets not only Section 325-54, but the Gale case, I don't see any significant substantial impact on the neighborhood. I think it's a nice addition in conformity. We approved one who, roughly across the street, one or two meetings ago, they were going to add on to the back, again, adding to the enhancement of the neighborhood. We would, though, want to impose a condition that we have no demolition, construction, new landscaping between June 30, 2019, and Labor Day, and the same for 2020, in case the project was delayed. I have no questions on it, but just wanted to make those comments.
And if I could ask, that's a typical condition that you do put on. I often ask if clarified that it's no exterior construction during that time and no new landscaping in the sense that people can keep, you know, servicing their yard.
Absolutely. Mr. Donahue.
To begin with, my colleagues, it's within the Gale case, and there is no detriment to the neighborhood.
Mr. Capoli.
No questions. I agree with my fellow board members.
Is that a short letter of support? Do you want to read that one in? Because there's only one.
This is a letter from Patricia Toth, addressed to the Zoning Board of Appeal. "I'm owner of 12 Pine Needle Lane. My house and property abuts the Applebombs to the South. I have reviewed their requests for special permit to construct an addition on a non-conforming lot. I've reviewed their plans and elevations. I have no objection to the proposed addition. I think their proposal development keeps in character with the neighborhood, as well as an enhancement to the neighborhood. Very truly yours, Patricia Toth."
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this application, either for it or against it? All right. Anything further, Attorney Singer?
No, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing on the case.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Hearing's closed. Why don't we just go around, and the board can state its thinking?
My view of the application and the plans and the construction tells me that it is in conformity with the current case law of Massachusetts. It's purely just requiring a special permit, not a variance, and I would vote to approve.
Mr. Hilliard. I have no objection. I think it's the, it meets the Gale case, and it does not increase the area around the, yeah, the existing residence area or the, and the property, it's going to be a great addition to the property, and therefore, I think it should be approved as a special permit.
Yeah, I agree. I think it meets all the requirements of the zoning bylaw and the Gale case. The only thing is, we do want to put that condition on.
Got it.
Mr. Donahue.
Yes, I'm in agreement as well. I think it'll be an enhancement to the neighborhood.
Mr. Capoli.
Agreed.
I will entertain a motion in the case, then.
I move that the Zoning Board of Appeals, today's date, approves the application on case number 2018-40, for the application and the agreement that they are allowed to make to do a special permit to construct an addition into a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application was submitted pursuant to the Code of Talon-Harwood, 325, Table 2, Area Regulations Set forth, MGL Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 16 Pine Needle Lane, Map 4, Parcel T1-24, in the RH-1 zoning district, and this approval is based upon the applicant's submitted documents for planned alteration or reconstruction of a non-conforming, single-family residence structure that is in accordance with the Gale case, and that there is no new nonconformity, and there will be no resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood. This meets the requirements of that, the Gale case. The only option is that the property is in such close proximity to the location of other residents, et cetera, that there'll be no external demolition or reconstruction or landscaping during the period 30 June 2019 through Labor Day 2019 or 2020.
With a clarification that just new landscaping.
You're right, new landscaping.
Okay, could I have a second, please?
Second.
All right, Mr. Capoli. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special permit granted.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. You may have your plans back if you would.
I'll take anything you don't want.
Oh, never mind, no, these I've got to, I've got to stamp these, but everybody else will. I'm sure be happy to. Thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
Wow, that's a set of plans. Okay, Mr. Hilliard, if I could read our next case, please.
Case 218, 2018-41. Andrew M. Wang, trustee in Virginia, A Kurtzman trustee through their agent, attorney William Crowell, have applied for special permit to demolish and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming two-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwood, Section 325, Table 2, Area Regulations Set forth, Mass. General Law's Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 4 Quasim Lane, Map 7, Parcel A-49, in the RH-1 zoning district. There is one letter from the Health Agent and one letter from Conservation. A letter from the Health Agent basically says it's restricted to five bedrooms, no increase in the square footed or habitable space, and a garbage disposal lot permitted. A letter from Conservation says Conservation Commission's approval required.
Okay, Attorney Crowell, if you could introduce yourself and who's with you at the table, and then present your case, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Crowell from Harwoodport, and I have with me tonight Andrew Wang and Karen Wang, who are the owners of the property at 4 Quasim Lane. They just acquired it in the first week in January, so when I submitted the application, they were under agreement to buy it from Virginia Kurtzman, that's why you see it. So, I had to say she was the agreed vendor selling, and they were the agreed vendor. They are now the sole owners, their trust is the sole owner of the property, and they're the beneficiaries of the trust. You folks are probably familiar with the area where the property is located, Flake Yard Road, Quasim Lane, Sea Quatten Lane, this area down off of, west of Air Lane. I submitted with the petition two plans by Moran Engineering. There's the existing conditions plan and the proposed conditions plan, so that you can see with the existing conditions plan that there is a structure there. It's actually a two-family dwelling. There's the guest living quarters on the east side, and the building inspector has confirmed that it's a grandfathered two-family dwelling, and that's why I submitted it as a petition to demolish and replace a two-family dwelling. Then on the proposed conditions plan, you can see that basically, they're building on the same footprint. There's slight, a slight expansion to the north, some amenities, deck and a rinsing station on the west side, but basically on the same footprint. I also submitted the building and elevation plans by Sandbar Design, Kevin Dauphane, who's the architect. He's here this evening also, along with the builder, Harry Ellis, is here. If there's any specific technical questions that you have. In reviewing the petition and the setbacks of the property in question, I submitted a narrative, and I'll just review that if you'll indulge me. With regard to the Quasim Lane boundary on the east side, the closest point of the existing dwelling is 20 feet. The closest point, and a 25-foot setback from a road is required, as you know, so they are non-conforming at 20 feet, they're pre-existing, non-conforming, and the closest point on the proposed dwelling will be 18 feet. So, it'll be two feet closer to Quasim Lane, but it's an intensification of the pre-existing nonconformity under the Gale case. The existing structure with regard to the northerly lot line, not the right-of-way, but the top northerly boundary line of the lot, is 26.7, and the closest point of the proposed structure will be 24.7, two feet, basically two feet closer, but as long as it's 20 feet from that lot line, it's still conforming, so we're not creating a new nonconformity on that northerly side, under the Dedrick case. With regard to the 12-foot right-of-way that you see on that northerly side, there is, it's delineated there, and since the structure is, the existing dwelling is about 26 feet from the northerly lot line, then the structure is certainly closer than 25 feet to the southerly edge of the right-of-way. So, if we come two feet closer, we're, again, intensifying an existing nonconformity where you're supposed to be 25 feet from a right-of-way. Along the westerly boundary, the existing structure right now is, the closest point is 6.6 feet, and that will be intensified again, but that's, it's supposed to be 20 feet under, if it was existing code, setback on a sideline would be 20 feet, it's 6.6, so, under the Gale case, they could intensify that existing nonconformity. So, they're proposing to be, with their rinsing station and their deck, to be, the closest point would be 2.3 feet from that boundary line. And you might say, well, what does the westerly neighbor think of that? And the westerly neighbor is okay with all of that. We have an agreement with the neighbor concerning all of this, and Jonathan Vanica and his attorney is here tonight, Attorney Sarah Toronto Flores, who will speak during the public comment period in support of this project on behalf of Jonathan Vanica's trust. So, the petitioner's contention is that the special permit that's requested to demolish and replace with some slight intensifications of an existing nonconformity will not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. As you know, that's the standard under the Gale case, or for a special permit in general, sorry, that there be no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood, not just to one Butter, and not something that's insignificant, but it needs to be substantial in the entire neighborhood. There would be no substantial increase in noise, odors, fumes, congestion, or the like. I know that when you get to the public comment period, there are letters from some of the Butters, several of whom are beyond the 300-foot notification area, so they're not immediately affected by this. But those letters, I think if I can, I'll address them more later if need be, but those letters concentrate on wanting the new dwelling to meet current setbacks. But as you know, you can demolish and replace an existing dwelling on the same footprint, and under Gale, you can intensify existing nonconformities, so we don't have to have the new dwelling meet current setback requirements, as you know. Also, the focus seems to be on concern about construction during the summer, and I've already talked with Mr. and Mrs. Wang previously, and they're certainly agreeable to your usual restriction that no substantial exterior construction or substantial landscaping from June 30 to Labor Day. They understand that fully, they've lived in this neighborhood before, they don't want to affect the character or the enjoyment of the neighborhood, and they certainly would be in agreement with that usual restriction that you folks make on construction, especially in seasonally affected areas. So, all that being said, the petitioner's request that you grant the special permit this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Hilliard.
Thank you. The roadway, you have parking out front on Quasim Road, right, with parking for two cars? Okay. And you have a roadway that goes back to the back of your house, and you have rights in that roadway?
Well, they own it.
You own the roadway?
They own it, it's an easement.
Okay.
So, they own that to the northerly lot line, as shown on the plan, subject to the right for the Vanica property to the west, to use that 12-foot right-of-way to go from Quasim Lane to their.
It's an access easement only, you can't park there, you can't leave a car.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So, as it currently stands, you have two parking, on your own house, two parking spaces, maybe three? I just wanted to.
Go ahead.
Well, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I, yes, I think the, okay.
And one further comment on that. In our agreement with Mr. Vanica, the Wangs don't want to see the roadway or be affected by the Vanica's vehicles going in and out, and they've agreed to plant a hedge along that, visual screening, noise screening, and so forth.
Okay.
So, that's all been worked out.
I looked at the house. My opinion, not being a builder at all, but in my opinion, it really does need a lot of work, if not a full replacement, so I certainly agree with that. I don't see any other infringement, but that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hedderstedt.
My issue is simple. You are doing a complete tear-down and reconstruction. So, if it wasn't for the Gale case and any other information you're talking, you've got a new house, you know, essentially a new house. What you've done, however, instead of putting it in the same footprint, you have changed the footprint, and then applying the Gale case against that. And what I'm saying is, I don't think that is the intent of the Gale case.
Ooh, I would beg to differ.
The Gale case, I believe, I believe the Gale case was on a piece of property that already wanted to extend, or if you will, intensify, the existing one, whatever the, whatever the nonconformity was. They wanted to extend it, they didn't want to make it new, just extend it. You're making it new by not staying in the same footprint.
Where are we now, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
You're not staying in the same footprint.
I'll give you a chance.
You stated that you're not staying in the same footprint, and so my question is, how do you apply the Gale case when the application of the Gale case, in my estimation, just mine, is it's an existing alteration or reconstruction, right? Existing, not demolishing. Therefore, as far as I'm concerned, you need to, you need to either apply for a variance, or if everybody else agrees that, well, maybe, you know, just because you're changing it a little bit, you still don't meet the requirements of our bylaw that says you must have at least one of the following existing nonconformances changed, building coverage, site coverage, or setback encroachments. You have to improve one of those. Now, that's never been brought up in the Gale case. The Gale case is strictly extending existing lot lines. In this particular case, you're not. You're doing something different. So, please explain to me, in your own words, why you think complete tear-down is the same thing as reconstruction?
Okay. May I respond?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Hedderstedt and I go back a long way on this board and presentations. First of all, I don't believe that that argument has been brought up in any of the past petitions that I have filed for demolition and reconstruction. It's the first time that I've heard this, number one. Number two, the Gale case, the facts of the Gale case was, it was a house in Gloucester on like a 3,400-square-foot lot, and they wanted to demolish and replace the existing dwelling. It was a total demolition, and they wanted to expand that dwelling on all four sides and come closer to all four boundaries. And the local Board of Appeals said, no, you have to have a variance, and they appealed that, and then it eventually got up to the Appeals Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and the Appeals Court said that it's no longer a variance to come closer and intensify and exist, any, you could, the Gale case said you can even create a new nonconformity, could do it on all four sides, new nonconformity, because Dedrick came along later and said, no, you can't do that. But Gale originally, so, we loved it, we lawyers loved it for two or three years, because it was, we could come in and say, okay, we want to even create a new nonconformity where we're more than 20 feet, we want to go to 12 feet, and Gale says, yes, special permit, not a variance. So, the facts of the Gale case were, it was a demolition of an existing, single-family dwelling, and it expanded on all four sides, and the Appeals Court said, yes, they could do that, and they allowed them to do it, and expanded the building, right? Then about four or five years later, the Dedrick case from Chatham went up through the same system, and I meant to say, the Appeals Court decision was appealed to the Supreme Judicial Court of Massachusetts, and they denied review. So, the Appeals Court case stood as the law. Then, in, four or five years later, the Dedrick case from Chatham came along, and it went all the way up through the same process to the Appeals Court. The Appeals Court modified their own decision and said, you cannot create a new nonconformity. The Appeals Court modified their own decision and said, you cannot create a new nonconformity, right? But you can intensify an existing nonconformity still. That was also denied review by the SJC, which means that appellate court decision stands as law as modified in the Dedrick case. So I beg to differ that those are the facts of the Gale case. These are the facts of the Gale case, and the Gale case says that you can demolish and replace, and you can intensify existing nonconformities, which I've done many times before this board in the past. But even granting that, we're only increasing on the northerly side by two feet. This is basically plopping a new structure on the same footprint, with all due respect. It's a couple of minor things on the side, and then throw in a shower and a deck on the Westerly side. So that's my argument in my own words, Mr. Hedestad, as to why I respectfully disagree with you.
Okay. I understand what you're saying, but I keep coming back to the fact, it keeps... Whatever case you're talking about, Gale case or the subsequent cases that happened after the fact, it keeps talking about intensifying existing. You're not intensifying existing. You're creating new ones because you're not in the same footprint. Now, if I remember correctly, after all the other ones that you've been in here, we've talked about the Gale case, and we've talked about, you know, intensifying it, but it's been on the existing. I don't believe, at least my little pee-pick in mind doesn't see, where we've created a new one by changing the lot line, by changing the set, by changing the footprint, which you've done.
See if this helps.
So...
See if this helps, if I can. Let's say they weren't demolishing, right? And they wanted to add on two feet to the north of the existing dwelling.
Right.
They could do that.
But they... Yes, but they are extending existing.
Right.
You're not extending existing.
But the argument is...
You created a new one.
The argument is, and the holding of the court in the Gale case was, it doesn't make any difference whether you demolish the existing nonconformity or you abide by... You just don't demolish and you add on. It doesn't make any difference. You can demolish and replace. We've done it many, many times before this board. So it's, if you... If we weren't demolishing, we could add on to the north under the Gale case. We happen to be demolishing, because as Mr. Hilliard said, it looks like it needs it. It's at that point of obsolescence. So we can demolish. You hold that same footprint line whether you demolish or you don't demolish.
If you retain the same footprint, I wouldn't have an objection. I have never had an objection. This particular case, I do, because I think what you've done is, you have, for whatever reasons, and I don't think it's absolutely necessary, what you've done, but you have reconstructed it in a different, on a different footprint. I don't know why, but as far as I'm concerned, you've created yourself a problem, and in my mind. And I'm concerned about the fact that we are taking a case that is, that talks about intensifying what's already there. And I understand what's already there, but you've changed what's already there. And that's what I... That's where I have a problem. And please, I'll turn it over to the rest of the board, but that's my concern.
I have nothing to say, Mr. Chairman.
I think what Gale is saying, and Attorney Crowell, is the intensification is of a nonconformity. So whether or not it's a tear-down or a rebuild, or just an addition, in either case, if it goes beyond the existing footprint, you're intensifying it. So I think Attorney Crowell's first point is, if they add it on, what's the difference? There's no difference between that and a tear-down extending the same two feet, in his hypothetical, I think it was two feet. You're intensifying the existing nonconformity.
That's what I would... Okay. Now, you've just said it. You're intensifying the existing nonconformance, and it's not existing anymore when you change the footprint.
Well, I think what the case says...
That's what I'm trying to get at.
The nonconformity exists currently. It's six... I'm just looking at the west side, 6.6 and 7.7. Well, it's now going to be six point... Oh, 6.2 and 2.7, coming closer, that's an intensification.
I have no objections to that. I have objections from the starting point. The starting point is, is a fact, a new, it's not the same footprint. It's not the existing. I'm just playing, I am looking at the words that are used, and I'm saying, it's not existing when you change the footprint.
It does exist in the sense that you're not meeting current setbacks. That's the nonconformity. That exists.
That's right.
And whether you keep the current footprint and add a couple of feet, you're still intensifying the existing.
That I would have no problem in.
And there's no difference...
No. I would take the existing. If you took the existing one and you said, okay, I'm going to add two feet, or subtract two feet, or whatever it is, I would agree with that. But it's not existing anymore. That's my point.
Yeah. I think we have to consider the fact that... The question is, does he lose his pre-existing nonconforming structure because he tears the house down? That's the question. The answer is, under the state, under the statute and the regulations, you only lose your pre-existing nonconforming rights if you abandon for 24 consecutive months. So if his house was torn down, he left the foundation, and on the 23rd month, he could build that house again on that foundation, which we would all agree doesn't meet the current zoning requirements, but it's established as a pre-existing nonconforming structure. So he doesn't lose it because he tears the house down. He could build it back up exactly the way it was without coming to this board. But he's coming to the board because he wants to build it back up the way it was, but extend it, and that extension is the Gale case. That's how I look at it.
Otherwise, the Gale case would not have any teeth whatsoever. It wouldn't allow you to do anything different. I have an opinion from Copeland and Page, who is the town of Howard's attorney, and the law firm for the town of Howard in 2012, that summarized the Gale case, right? And it was a 1,000-square-foot house on a 2,700-square-foot lot, and it was a demolition of the existing single-family dwelling, and they allowed him to expand it on all four sides. And the final paragraph of their opinion to the town was that a finding of no substantial detriment to the neighborhood is now sufficient by itself to allow the expansion of a single or two-family dwelling, which introduces new violations of local dimensional requirements. What's that mean? It means that you can demolish and replace and make it bigger with a special permit, not a variance.
Interesting.
Opinion by the town of Howard's law firm.
I understand. I understand what she said. But she landed, she hung on to the not detrimental to the neighborhood, and I understand that one, too. That I have no problem with either. I just have a... And what my colleague to my left has just stated, something I didn't realize, I didn't know, and within the two years, so...
That's the demolition bylaw in our town of Howard's bylaw.
Right.
If you demolish and you don't replace for two years, or you abandon the use for two years... But think of it this way, your house burns down. You can build under our bylaw on the same footprint.
Sure.
As long as you rebuild within two years. Same thing here. We're not burning it down, we're tearing it down.
You keep saying the same footprint, and I'm just saying, it's not the same footprint.
It's not.
And that's my only concern.
It's not. It's a little bit bigger. It doesn't have to be the same footprint under the Gale case.
I understand. You and I have gone around and round on a lot of things, and unfortunately, you win another one.
Well, you made my evening, Mr. Chairman. This is on TV, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, I was supposed to announce at the beginning. I forgot. We're all being taped. This will be on Channel 18. You can see it on the YouTube website for the town of Howard, probably tomorrow, if not for sure Friday. Just a couple of questions. Okay, I see where the pool is proposed, and we already know the pool fence can't go there, right? Conservation, it's got to be...
They'll deal with conservation on that.
Back up by the 50 or the other side of the 50. But how come the pool equipment is way up in the northwest corner, not located anywhere near the pool? Because it's going to be kind of tight between the deck and the outside shower down there to be...
And that has a bearing on the zoning?
Just a question.
Oh, just a question.
I can ask questions. Come on.
So, can I request Mr. Ellis, if he knows the answer? Harry Ellis, the builder?
Okay.
Or Mr. Doffin?
Ellis has been here previously. If you could, please, sir, just for the record...
Yep, I'm Harry Ellis. Yep, the proposed builder for the Wang project. Put the pool equipment back there just for noise and accessibility.
Okay.
There's no real better place to put it than that little courtyard there that's going to be blocked off by the trees and fences in there.
Okay, just a question. Okay, that's fine. Thank you. The steps down to the beach on the property, are they private? Just yurt steps? The ones that are coming down from the grass area?
Right. Right.
They're not on their property. I mean, those are... The public is in the street.
The one on Quasim Lane is different. They don't own that.
Right, that's public.
Right, but the one on their property is just for them.
Okay. Just... The only other thing, if the board sees fit to grant this, I would want to see a condition that if conservation does anything with respect to the pool or the pool fence that requires any adjustment to the building itself, that you come back in with new plans. We'd want to take a look at it.
Absolutely.
A question for the board, if they move the pool, do we want to see that, too, or not? Do we care where the pool is?
I don't... I think it's conservation's...
Conservation's problem.
I agree, but I just want to see what the board says.
There's no structure over three foot tall, right?
I'm sorry?
Isn't any structure over three feet tall? So there's a wall to the pool, then it would have to come back?
I don't... Yeah, they'd have to...
It's level to the ground, so it's not a structure.
Right, they're not going to put a wall, apparently, just a fence.
And it doesn't affect the setback from the lot lines. So it doesn't... I don't think it has any bearing with the Board of Appeals.
But we may want to ask for a substituted plan of record when you have your final as-built. If you're going to move your pool, I think the documents we have on file here ought to reflect what you do. So if you do move the pool, you just have to come in and ask for a substituted plan of record, and we'll accept it. So that goes on record.
That plan would be submitted to the Conservation Commission.
That's right, for approval.
And probably to the building department.
Right.
So he would have the... He's the zoning enforcement agent. He would have the final say on it.
Okay, and if somebody had their hand up, is this one of Mr. Ellis's people? If you're just... If it's a public, we haven't opened it up yet.
The architect.
The architect.
Okay.
Kevin Doffany from Sandbox Design Studio. So my understanding of where that, the pool enclosure extending over the 50-foot resource area line is, if you look at the existing site plan, there's actually at the corner of the guest quarters, there's a small circular terrace that also extends beyond that 50-foot boundary line.
On the existing condition.
On the existing site plan.
Yeah, the block patio.
Yeah, so the... I believe the site engineer has already had an informal conversation with the Conservation Commission that the trade-off of that square footage that is currently over the 50 would be equal to, or less than, if you will, the pool enclosure extension over the 50. And actually, the terrace that exists now is going to become lawn area in the proposed plan. So that fence that extends over the 50 within that fenced area up to the 50-foot line is actually lawn, not terrace.
Okay.
So we're actually making a... It's benefiting the property rather than being impervious. It's going to be pervious.
Okay, well, our only concern is if conservation makes you change things.
Right, I just, I know that was an outstanding question. I don't think we're going to have to reconfigure the pool or the enclosure line based on that informal conversation with Conservation, but I agree with what you're saying. If any plans change, we'll come before the board again.
Right. Okay, thank you.
But you're not requiring a new filing with this board.
I guess it would depend on the extent of the changes.
Well, if we were changing the footprint...
Right.
...of the structure, then we'd have to come back to amend.
Right.
Right, but just the pool, we had nothing to do with.
Mr. Hedestad said, no, just file that with the building department. So you have, we have the revised plans. The building inspector would want that.
Okay, that's what I... I would agree with that, yes.
Yeah. Mr. Donahue.
I had the same question. I made myself a note with regard to the pump house. The question, is that enclosed?
The pump house?
Well, for the pool. That's the system that runs the pool.
Where the AC units are?
No.
Is that what you're saying?
Pool equipment, is that...
Pool equipment.
Right. How close behind is the property to the... That pump house, or the pool equipment? My only point bringing this up, a little bit familiar with it, they can get pretty noisy when they're running. If it's enclosed, it depresses the sound to the homes adjacent to it. Would it be amenable to have it enclosed? Is that practical?
We'd ask Mr. Doffin, the architect.
Yeah, so we had a discussion with the pool installation company, and they would not recommend enclosing the pool equipment, and it's not currently enclosed. It's shown within a fenced area, so the neighbors wouldn't be looking at it. We actually put it on that side of the house, too, to be more friendly to the neighbors so that it's not on one of the side properties where you can see it and hear it more. So the right-of-way is actually going to offer some buffer, as is the hedge that's going to be planted between the house and the right-of-way. So there really is no better location for it than where we're proposing it.
I made, Mr. Chairman, this question.
Wait, you're done?
I'm sorry. I just...
On that question? On that question, I'm done. Okay.
On the... What is their basis for not enclosing the works?
I think it has to do mostly with heat and any, you know, fumes or whatever.
What about enclosing with no top? Because that'll absorb... I'm assuming without knowing that it's going to be noisy. Otherwise, I think someone said, you're going to have it away from their house for that reason. So it's going to be noisy, maybe to someone. I don't know where it is in relationship to the immediate abutter, which may say, well, you could enclose it on four sides, but with no top.
They have with a fence.
Right, understood. Yeah, there is a fence. So I guess maybe the question is the degree of enclosure, how close the fence would be to it, but either way it would be...
It's an aesthetic issue, I think, to site, but also would be the sound as well.
Yeah, I think the location is going to be least detrimental to any of the abutters, as well as, you know, folks walking down Quasim.
We do have the authority to, as a condition, we could do that. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And that could apply to the air conditioning units.
Air conditioning.
I think there's four of them up there. Mr. Donahue, to you.
My other question has to do with the response from the Health Department. Property is restricted to five bedrooms per plan dated 12/27/18. There's seven bedrooms in that property, if I counted it correctly. Proposed?
The proposal is for five bedrooms, and it's a six-bedroom septic. The proposed septic system that is going to be constructed is going to have a six-bedroom capacity.
Okay.
So the Board of Health, if the Board of Health looks at that house and says it's got seven bedrooms, then they're going to have to get rid of a bedroom. But they've got a six... They're proposing to build a five-bedroom house with a six-bedroom septic capacity.
Okay. The reason I had asked that question was I thought I had counted seven bedrooms in the property.
There are seven bathrooms, but as you know, Mr. Donahue, those don't dictate septic capacity.
No.
The bedrooms do.
I know that. Bedroom one, bedroom two, bedroom...
I see six. I thought I saw one more.
Five, six, and the master. Where's bedroom three? Wait.
First floor.
There's one and two. No bedrooms on the first floor. Proposed.
Proposed.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the existing. Okay, I'm sorry.
We're actually...
You've got a master bedroom.
Not building as many bedrooms as we could.
So you're taking out both bedrooms on the first floor?
Right. For the proposed house.
Yeah, it looks like five. Okay, basically, I miscounted on the property, and I apologize. But if it goes to a sixth bedroom, that will re-require the change with regard to the septic system, is that what you're saying?
No, because they have a six-bedroom capacity to their septic system.
When it's done.
Let me see, I didn't get this.
Right here.
Conservation, I'm sorry, Health Agent says five as per your plans of 12/27/18.
Right, right, that's what the plans are.
Right.
If for some reason, later on, they wanted to have it.
It says no, no increase unless it's approved by the Board of Health.
Right, they'd have to come back, the Board of Health.
Thank you, no further questions. Capoli.
Apology accepted, Mr. Donahue, not needed, but accepted.
No questions.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, it's all right.
It's part of the public, opening it up to the public, yeah.
We have six letters from the general public. I don't, I'm not going to go into reading them because they'll be incorporated by reference into the record. Just as an overview, three of them feel strongly on the issue that no construction be occurred during that period of time in the summer that would interfere with anyone coming in and out. Three of them are opposed to the project for the various reasons, particularly because what has just been discussed here, that it's not a reconstruction on the exact same foundation with the exact same measurements. It's a reconstruction that expands to some extent, and we've already had that discussion. So, they're three and three, and they're available if you wish to see them. The board has copies of them, we've read them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hilliard. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak to this petition? If you could come to the podium, please, and identify your name, yourself by name and address.
I'm Ann Ward, I presently reside in Chatham. But prior to Mrs. Kurtzman's occupation of that Fort Quasen Lane house, my family's been in that house since 1935. We love the house, and we love the proposed building, and we love Andy and Karen, and are delighted that they're going to be with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, my name is David Flannery. I live in Wellesley, Mass, and my parents are Joseph and Margaret Flannery. They live at 12 Quasen Lane, so they would be abutting the property to the north. And they're elderly and couldn't make it here tonight, so just wanted to make a few comments tonight. Would just ask the board to respectfully consider some of our concerns and wishes moving forward here. So, we've, we've put this in a note, which you have, it's one of the notes that was submitted. January 27, the subject was comments on the proposed Wang House on Fort Quasen Lane. So, the main, the main point, I just want to reiterate a couple of points in that letter, I'll be, I'll try to be brief here. But the existing house is non-conforming, and the Wang's application violates a number of conditions for non-conforming structures detailed in Section 32554 of the 2009 Harwich zoning bylaws. The existing house is non-conforming and would become more so given the setbacks proposed for the new house. So, we do not think that the zoning board should allow any enlargement beyond the existing footprint, or the footprint of the existing house. And we request that the plans be modified to maintain the current setbacks. So, briefly, just on the three sides of the property of concern, the front yard which faces Quasen Lane, the required bylaw setback is 25 feet, the current dwelling is 20 feet, the proposed plans are 18 feet, so a further reduction of two feet. The rear yard which faces west and abuts number two Quasen, required setback is 20 feet. The current dwelling is 6.6 feet, and it will be further reduced to 2.3 feet. I think it is great that the Vanikas support the proposed plans, but you should know that that westward expansion of the house will limit, further limit our views of the ocean from our dwelling. And the side away from the ocean, which is to the north, and that's actually the property that abuts my parents' house, the required bylaw is 20 feet setback. The existing house is 14.8 from the edge of the right-of-way, and that will further be reduced to 12.7 feet or about a two-foot reduction as you've indicated. So, to say that the proposed plans are more or less in the same footprint, give or take a few feet, the take is really all on the, on the sides of abutting property owners or on the Quasen Lane road. So, that's our primary concern. Our main concern and wish was that the proposed dwelling would fit within the existing footprint as this gentleman Dean had talked about earlier. Secondly, I just want to move on and say the non-conforming nature will be further increased by the following. The proposed height of the building, of the house, going from the current 24 feet to 29.5 feet. That's a 23% increase, and will significantly limit the views of the ocean that we have from our property. Overall, the square footage increases by 29%, so from our standpoint, it's hard to see how the house could be bigger given the property itself. I would also indicate that the plans call for a roof that will extend three feet out from the edge of the house on all sides, and we think that this size overhang is excessive and will further block views and airflow coming into our property. So, those concerns around the enhanced footprint of the house, both length, width, and height, are our primary, primary concern in that it will encroach really on our views of the south-facing ocean. I want to go and touch on one other topic that was talked about earlier tonight. We're concerned that the plan indicates that the AC and pool equipment will be placed on the 12 Quasen Lane side of the property and would extend some 11.4, 11 feet, four inches from the house, leaving only 1.3 feet to the right-of-way. But most importantly for us, and it was talked about earlier, it was placed there really to limit noise for the owners, I believe. But we, as a family, spend most of our time at the porch, which is in the south-facing side of the house, right next to the pool equipment and the AC units. So, we're going to be, we're going to be dealing with that noise throughout the summer months. So, it might be fine for others, it's not going to be great for us. Yeah, and I think you've, you've talked about limiting the construction period. I think that was talked about earlier. And also, you may have touched upon this, just requesting that no cars, trucks, or equipment are parked in front of our house during those summer months for safety reasons primarily and access to the beach. So, those are, those are primarily our concerns. And we appreciate your consideration of those issues.
Do you know how close your folks' house is to Quasen Lane there?
I don't offhand, no, but I can get that if.
Because I'm just looking at the assessor's plan, and it looks closer than the existing structure is. I don't know how accurate that is for dimensions, but that's how the assessor shows it.
Yeah, they bought the house in 1983, if you're talking about 12 Quasen Lane. And no, no material changes have been made to the footprint of the house.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Is there anyone else in the public? Yes, ma'am.
I think, you know, just, you'll, you'll figure out the zoning-related issues, okay? The, the, the pool equipment and AC units, there's been some discussion here, and we're hopeful that that location is either moved and/or changes are made to limit the noise from those units as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a concern, that's really a concern.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Toronto Flores. I'm an attorney with Nutter McLennan and Fish, and I'm here on behalf of John and Sarah Vanica, who own the house directly to the west, they're the abutter directly to the west, and it is their right-of-way which crosses the northerly portion of this property. And I'm here to give our support to this particular application. Mr. Wang and his counsel have spent considerable time, in a number of hours, speaking both with me and my clients. Our questions have been fully answered and our concerns fully addressed, and we are able to stand here and support this application this evening. For what it's worth, and perhaps it's not worth anything, but in my prior life as town council for the town of Brewster, I opined very similarly to Copelman and Page's opinion on the Gale case. I completely agree with Attorney Kroll's interpretation of that case. It did involve 1,000-square-foot seasonal cottage that was in fact replaced with a 2,700-square-foot year-round residential structure that exceeded the footprint of that seasonal cottage on all four sides. And the court in that case found that it could be, that was an intensification, not merely an extension, but an intensification of those intrusions into the side yard setbacks, and that it could be done by special permit upon the finding of the board that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And that's, that's what your special permit application process in Harwich requires you to do. So, I fully agree with that interpretation. I think that this project can be approved by special permit, and again, confirm that the most direct abutters and where the construction is primarily going to be closest to the lot line, the Vanikas are here to give their support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, of this lady?
No.
Okay, why don't you hold it, and we'll go through the public, and then we'll come back. We'll let Attorney Kroll speak again, and then you can ask any questions. Anyone else in the public like to speak to this application? Do you want to respond, or Mr. Donahue has a question? Do you want to hear his question, or would you like to respond first, Attorney Kroll?
Question, and I'll respond.
Okay.
I probably missed it, but where is the septic system on the plan?
It's not on this plan, it's on another plan that's been submitted to the Conservation Commission. And we've talked with the Attorney Flores about that, also Toronto Flores about that as well. The proposed septic system is going to be underneath the 12-foot right-of-way. It'll be H20 loading and all of that. And I believe that Moran Engineering, Dan Crotto, has discussed that with the Board of Health and so forth. So, that's where the septic's going, according to this plan, December 31, 2018, the septic system, and it's under the right-of-way, which you're allowed to do.
What is, what is going to be, how is the pool going to be handled when it comes to changing the water? I mean, at some point, you're going to maybe have to drain that pool. Where is that outflow going to go? You only have two choices, you can either run it on the ground, pump it out, or it can be brought by a tanker truck in which they remove it. I'm just curious, because it's so close to the ocean.
Right. I think that's probably, that issue will be addressed by the Conservation Commission, because that's their purview. I would think those folks would be very concerned about that. If they are, then the petitioner at that point would, would have to address that.
All right, well, thank you for the septic system.
Go ahead. I have two questions. I'm concerned about the pool noise. I'm not concerned about it that I know it's going to be a noise, I'm concerned about it that it could be. And I think Mr. Flannery raises a reasonable question, saying that you're moving it so you don't have to hear it, whatever it is, and maybe they have to hear it. I don't know what the decibel count is, I don't know what, of this particular pool house. I don't know what the decibel requirements are in the town, but I know there are. And I think we should look at that in the sense of that if it was put there for the purpose of not having you hear it, and I understand that, it shouldn't be put there for the purpose of having someone else hear it either. So, I would...
I mean, personally, I'd like to see the pool equipment and the AC go down there in that grassy area by the guest living. Because if you look at the assessor's map, that would be away from the people on the west and also from this folks' parents on the north. And it looks to me like there's plenty of room down there in that grassy area.
But on a grassy...
Wait a minute, you'd have to go on the other side there on the Quasen side because of the TCB setback.
Yeah.
You'd have to go on, but there's plenty of room there on the Quasen side.
Yeah, the grass section which is 19.5 feet.
By 183, plenty of room over there. And it could be screened off, it could be planted. But I have to agree, I don't think that's an unreasonable request from the neighbors, because if you went down there and looked, I mean, that northerly house is pretty close.
It is.
It does, it does create a problem, I'm sure, for the builder to move all the piping and so on and so forth, because, but still, I think the neighborhood is much more important than...
And it's a shorter one than what's there now.
Right.
Mr. Wang has some thoughts on that, about the neighborhood and the location, if you, if you want to hear him. But keep in mind that this, these, these, this equipment and these units are, if anybody's going to hear it, it's, it's these folks next to me. It's attached, it's right next to their house. They're the closest ones, but go ahead, Mr. Wang.
Well, I mean, I don't want to say the wrong thing, but sometimes I do. But the, the air conditioning equipment, first of all, is, in terms of decibels, louder than a pool equipment. So, everyone knows what an air conditioner sounds like. Personally, that noise, just to get a reference point, I think if we put it over on the Quasen side, I think more neighbors would be upset, because everyone would hear it on the other side of Quasen, and everybody coming up and down, that's where people socialize. If we put it on our other side of the house, it would be really close to the Vanica's house. I mean, we could get out a big map, Kevin might be able to talk to it, but we actually put some thought into this particular location mindful of, when Harry talked about noise, it wasn't only us, it was everybody. So, it's kind of like, if, if we have to have air conditioning, which we want, and many of the neighbors do, it has to go somewhere. I look at this, the, the pool filtration, I'm not a pool expert, as the same thing. I'm not opposed if you put a condition on there about putting some type of enclosure around it. I don't think you want to put a top on it because of heat.
That's a safety issue.
But the last thing we want is a neighbor to be upset.
Well, you have one right here.
Right, so, you know, I sent a letter to whomever wanted to talk, and I'm happy to talk to anyone.
So, you could put a condition on it?
Yeah, I mean, we just want to be in the neighborhood and...
Now, do you, do you plan on having a generator?
I have not discussed that.
Okay, if you do, I, I think we'd like to know about it, because some generators are required to be turned on just prophylactically every...
Every week.
Every week, and they're noisy.
Very noisy.
So, if you're going to have one, you're going to have, that's going to be another issue, whether it's your northern neighbor or your southern neighbor or whatever, so, okay.
But he indicated he's willing to abide by a condition if you want to...
Yeah, I think require a wall around it. Yeah, we don't want to upset anyone.
I think we would want a fence, he's got a fence there, but with maybe some noise-reducing panels or, you know, inside the fence that they're not going to be visible, that, you know, like the highway people put up. Not that ugly, for heaven's sakes, but you know, something that might reduce the noise. I do agree, if, you're going to get the bulk of it in your house.
It's just going to be...
I do agree, if you're going to get the bulk of it in your house, I mean, when my two AC units are working, the two outside units, I mean, they're noisy. From inside, I don't know if our neighbors notice them, they've never said anything, but they are noisy. But I think it's not unreasonable to request a fence with some kind of noise abatement, paneling, or whatever.
And as part of the agreement with the Vanicas, they agreed with the Vanicas that they would put a hedge three feet, or as close to three feet as possible, from the southerly side of that right-of-way. That hedge can be as tall as need be to, but the point is, it will additionally help to buffer the noise and the visual aspect of that equipment. But they'd agree to that condition.
Yeah, we'd like some kind of, you know, like a nice white PVC with some noise absorbing on the inside, something like that, not a split rail, because, of course, the noise is going to go right through. And the hedges, yeah, it'll reduce it some, but I think...
Mr. Flannery has...
If I can address...
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay, so the, when Mr. Flannery, just very quickly, he referred to setbacks. As you know, this is grandfathered. This is a house that's grandfathered. We don't have to meet current setbacks, period. And Gale says we can expand as we've already been through. You also know that there's no right to a view or airflow in Massachusetts unless you have a recorded easement to that effect. Chance you take when you own and you're not right on the water, somebody else can impair your view. There's nothing you can do about it. In terms of the height and the views and the airflow, same thing. They can increase to, up to 30 feet under our bylaw from mean, average grade, and that's permitted as of right. And there's no right to a view. Same with the overhangs on the roof. It's just the way it is. Thank you.
Did you have something further, sir?
Just one additional concern in light of some new information. The placement of the septic system underneath the right-of-way is a bit concerning for a few reasons. One is, again, it's closest to where we spend most of our time in the summer, prevailing southwesterly winds in the summertime, and there are quite a few bathrooms, proposed dwelling. I'm hopeful there are no issues, but it's a densely populated neighborhood in the summer months, and definitely concerns around any externalities associated with the placement of that septic system underneath the roadway to access number two, Quasen.
This is a new system you're putting in.
New system, and there's no other place to put it.
Okay, no, but it's a new system.
Harry, I'm sure can talk to that.
You have to understand, I mean, we do ask the question, but we don't really have jurisdiction. That's up to the Health Department, and I guess the Health Department, not the Conservation, but the Health Department. And if they sign off on it, they're the authority. And they're very conscientious, so I think if they, whatever they approve, I think you can rely on and be comfortable with.
If I may, you can't put it on the south side of that house, because of the wetlands and so forth. It's the only place that they can put it.
Where is it now?
And the, as far as odors or fumes, I mean, it's a septic tank, septic system. It's not the old days with the septic pools that we, some of us grew up with.
Is that currently where it is?
No.
Oh, I didn't think so.
It's currently where the swimming pool is.
I'm sorry, where? Okay.
Where's the what? Swimming pool is going to go.
It's underneath the pool now.
The existing septic tank is where the pool would be, and the existing leaching pit is right where the pool fence...
The spa is.
Will be. So they're getting it away from...
The only other question I have is regarding the noise, and I understand what you're talking about, the air conditioning, et cetera. But the one remaining item that was brought up, and I didn't know whether you're going to have it or not, if you do have a system to add power to the house, if you lose power, it's going to be a problem, even if you put it there. I mean, I have one across the street. I'm two lots, essentially two full lots away, and for 20 minutes in the, every Sunday, I get it. You can hear it a mile away. So I hope, if you do have one, I would hope you'd put it somewhere else other than where it is. Because obviously, if you put it where the air conditions are and the pool equipment, et cetera, I mean, you've got a real increase in noise that I think is, you're asking for trouble. I think that's, you could put that elsewhere without, possibly on the side of Quasen Lane, and let it go there.
Duly noted.
Do you intend this to be year-round or just summer? Currently?
Summer.
So it's not likely, in the short term, they'd have need for a generator if they're not going to be here in the winter?
Well, but if he loses it in the summertime, he needs it.
But that's, how likely is that?
Very likely. You never know when you're going to lose it.
We hadn't contemplated doing that. If Harry had recommended that at some point in the project, I'm happy to, you know, put it someplace else. We have not talked about putting a generator on the property.
Can you make a condition?
We're not proposing one.
I don't...
Not in front of you.
Have authority to do that.
Yeah, I don't think we do. It's going to be in the jurisdiction of the building inspector anyway, because of the installation and then the noise level. If it's a noise issue...
I haven't looked at them, that there are at least some noise regulations, and I know the town was looking at them, so they'd have to comply with whatever, so...
Okay.
Okay, is there anything else before I close the public hearing? Anyone else out there want to say anything? No? Attorney Kroll, anything else?
Set, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second, Mr. Donahue, public hearing closed. Okay, Mr. Hill, your thoughts?
My review of the plans and particularly the testimony is the most significant thing, is I don't believe it caused results in a substantial detriment to the area. I think the owners are willing to make whatever changes are necessary to mitigate any issues that have come up, and I think it also meets the regulation on pre-existing non-conforming and its extension.
Mr. Hedersted? No comment. Yes, I agree. I, the house right across the street on Quasen looks like it's roughly going to be, you know, the same size. There's a lot of big houses up and down that street. I'm sure probably, as I said, the lot to the north, this gentleman's folks is non-conforming. It looks like they're pretty close to Quasen, so the fact that they're going two more feet, I don't think it's going to make them much different from your folks' house, if any. But beyond that, the existing law under this Gale case says that they do have the right to increase existing non-conformities, not create new ones. And I don't know if you followed all of that discussion, but the fact that they're already too close on some of the sides, and now they want to go even closer, that's permitted. Okay, they're already having an existing non-conformity. The Gale case says that existing non-conformity can be increased, and we've been back and forth, but it's, I think, been agreed upon now by Mr. Hedersted that that does, in fact, apply both to additions and to tear downs and total reconstructions. And I think the case is pretty clear. So I think it meets the requirements to have a special permit. I see no significant detriment to the neighborhood. That's the test, sir, not, some of the neighbors might be detrimentally affected as they see it, but that's not the legal standard. The standard is, does it have a detrimental effect on the neighborhood as a whole? And really, you've got to look at, I mean, what would that be? Well, maybe it's so aesthetically out of character with the neighborhood, that's one concern. Is it going to decrease the property values of the neighborhood, perhaps, because it's so outlandish or extraordinary? It's certainly not the case with this proposal. Nice-looking house, these people have done a lot of homework. I think the board is sympathetic to the noise issues, and I would want to see a condition that they have the AC units and the pool equipment fenced with some kind of noise abatement...
Shrubbery.
...insulation on the inside, as well as the shrub re-fence along the 12-foot right-of-way. We also are going to request the condition that there be no demolition, exterior construction, new landscaping between June 30 and Labor Day 2019 and 2020, and we'll request the condition, what was the other one? Oh, that if there's any change to the structure, they will have to come back before this board. If the change is only to the pool, they will simply have to file revised plans with the Building Department. So, you know, we are somewhat constrained on what we can do here by the law, but we do try to address the extent, as reasonable, neighbors' concerns. So it might not be exactly what you want, but we're hoping that will, you know, ameliorate the adverse impact on you and your parents. Mr. Donahue?
After driving around the neighborhood a few times, looking at that property and other properties, many of those properties appear to be non-conforming, based upon just the way they're looking when that was probably built down there. The property is not a detriment to the neighborhood. Your construction is certainly going to enhance the value of the neighborhood, and I'm in agreement with having it built.
Thank you. Mr. Coppoli?
For all the reasons the other board members stated, I'm inclined to vote yes.
All right, next time, we're going to start at your end, because...
Absolutely. By the time you get down to me, I have to say.
Okay, I will entertain a motion in the case.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The Zoning Board of Appeals, today's date approves for a special permit, the application on the case 2018-41, by Andrew M. Wang, and trustee, and Virginia...
No, that cuts, she's not on anymore, is she?
No.
No, she's off.
Just Andrew, and I didn't...
I'm Karen.
Karen. Andrew and Karen Wang.
But she's not on the title. It's Andrew as trustee of the...
Then just Andrew, then.
Of the LS...
Will somebody please tell me what's going on?
Yeah, as far as the petitioner is Andrew Wang, trustee of the LSW CAPE, LSW Cape Realty Trust. That's the owner of the property. He's the petitioner.
Andrew?
Wang.
Is the trustee?
Yes.
And owner of the property at?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. The application made by Andrew M. Wang, owner of the property, which has, which he has applied...
As trustee, Mr. Has... As trustee.
And trustee, all right, trustee.
To pick it up to demolish and replace.
Has been granted a special permit to demolish and replace a pre-existing non-conforming two-family dwelling. The application was pursuant to the Code of Towne of Harwich, Section 325, Table 2, Area Regulation set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 4 Quasen Lane, map 7, partial A, 49, in the RH1 zoning district. This approval is based upon the applicant's submitted documents for planned alteration or construction, or in this particular case, demolish and reconstruction of a non-conforming double, two-family dwelling. And in accordance with the Gale case, that there is no new conformity, no new non-conformity, and there will be no resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood. Based upon the fact that it is in such a, yeah, such a small area and so many houses around it, we, because, and close to such a residential location, we, the case, there can be, the case has stated that there will be no substantial external construction, what, construction or new landscaping during the period, 30 June...
Or demolition.
That all part of the same motion, Mr. Chairman?
Or demolition, yeah.
Or demolition and all that.
Or demolition.
It said, I said, substantial demolition, external construction, or new landscaping during the period, 30 June 2019, or through Labor Day 2019 or 2020. There are other conditions placed upon this application and the special permit, one of which is that the area to the west, northwest side of the property, which currently is situated and has identified as a pool equipment area and air conditioning area, will be fenced in such a manner as to try to reduce the noise, type of fencing in the inside at least, and on the exterior, that there be substantial growth of landscaping to also attempt to reduce the noise to the area due to the pool equipment or air conditioning being there. The other condition is if, if after review through the various town committees and offices, the pool has to be moved to some degree, and that it does change the building or the dwelling, the proposed dwelling, in any form or fashion, the, they will, the zoning board of appeals will be, will entertain a review of those changes.
And they'll file a revised plan to show the final pool...
Well, right. They have to file a revised plan.
Could I have a second, please? Okay, second, I guess, Mr. Donahue. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Jury, none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special permit granted.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. The motion... Yes, thank you.
What's this? You know, there's going to have to be a major change in this.
A proposal to, huge change. I proposed it when they, to the planner, when they do the... I told her that all of that conflicts with the Gale case now.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's what I was, but we didn't have time to really talk about it before the meeting there.
Well, I have a, you also sent some information out.
About the office. You better believe it.
Which? On a shoestring, huh?
Well, you've got to, you've got to be frugal.
I had a question with, and I guess what I'll have to do is I'll email you what the question is. But, anyway. All right, good job, Attorney Kroll, as always. And Mr. Hedersted's straight is really, quite an exercise.
Puts me through the paces.
He's my golf buddy. He helps me at golf. You've got to make a living somehow.
Yeah, that's right. You want something, you're going to earn it.
Who was the woman sitting? Who made that comment?
She was a lawyer for the people on the west. She was a lawyer for the people on the west. Her name, I didn't catch, no, we're still on tape. I have a generator. Pardon? I have a generator. I have a generito. You have a wet full house generito. It's five feet outside my bedroom window. Oh, Jesus. It goes on, and I do not hear it. And I checked with my neighbor before I installed it, because all of our homes are very close. I had no trouble getting it in. The air conditioning, the one I happen to have, is very quiet, directly outside my kitchen. I chase it to my porch, and we don't even hear it back here. This guy, my, my next-door neighbor has it, has one. You know, you can hear it. You can hear, oh, can I ever hear it?
Will you move the motion on the minutes?
Anybody have any comments they, I had none, Dean had none, anyone else?
Move passage.
What's that?
I move passage of the minutes.
Okay, so you have a move, all right.
Second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Minutes approved. You're not gonna be here in February?
What's the date in February? Oh, no, I'm, I'm leaving sixteenth, I'll be back till March sixteenth.
I'll tell you when I'll be here.
I will be here in March.
You will be here?
I will be here in March.
So I presume Ms. Muller will be back for the February meeting? I haven't heard otherwise.
I'll plan on coming reluctantly. So I'll still be in a sling. I'll be here.
You're getting, you're getting shoulder?
Yeah, the right one this time.
Replacement or...
Just another rotator.
Rotator.
You know, it's a good, it's a good thing he only has two shoulders.
I, I have a trial in Salem that day, so depending on...
You won't be back for a week, nobody, you can't get here from Salem.
I, I know. I, it, you know, really depends on how long it goes.
Well, if we, if we have Ms. Muller, that'll mean we'll have four.
I'll be here, yeah, we'll give the applicants the option, as usual, to go forward or go to March, whatever. Most of them, I, I don't think anybody's, well, that's not true, but rarely has anyone.
And the two cases, I've now forgot.
Oh, I got Kroll, I got Kroll again?
No, what I could do, if you, can you do, can we do it remotely?
No. It doesn't really work very well. We used to, and you, you can't hear, you literally cannot hear or be heard.
Okay.
It just didn't work very well. Oh, we'll be okay.
Maybe we'll get a new member before then.
Mr. Capoli has suggested to someone that they sign up and join on, so maybe we'll have anyone, anyone else who would like to.
I, I don't know of anyone now, now, I got an inquiry the week before last to go on the Channel eighteen. Apparently, they have the different board chairs speak about what they do to try to get volunteers. So I said I'd do it this year. I, I don't know if anybody contacted me last year, I don't remember, but I know I didn't do it. So every board in town, almost every board is having trouble getting volunteers. Real issue. So if anybody out there is looking at Channel eighteen, we'd love to have you join us.
This is, this is interesting stuff.
It is, you get to see what's going on in the town before it happens. Any further business? I'll take a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Second? Okay, meeting closed.
Thank you.